It is 5:31. If we could call the regular Board of Education meeting for October 14th to order, and if you at all, please stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Present.
Mrs. Gillis.
Present.
Mrs. Snyder.
Present.
Mr. Yakubozie.
Item four, I take the recommendation to adopt the agenda as presented, which includes the addendums that were added today. And support? So any discussion or comments? Hearing your sitting nun, please call the roll.
Mr. Yakubozie.
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Item five will be good news reports. Mr. Sayers?
Yes, we're going to start with Mr. Wolf, our Athletic Director, I believe.
Thanks for having us tonight. I'd like to call, I have Beeson's and Jacob Fitzpatrick come forward, please. And as they come forward, I'd like to start off by saying it was great this past Friday night, we welcome back a large group of the 1969 Lakeland Conference Championship Football Team, including Mr. Yakubozie. It was great having them.
You're giving away my eight.
Sorry. I didn't say what your high school was in 1969.
Did you say 1939?
But it was great having them back. It was a nice night for the, to have that group back and get recognized, and I know they had so, had a good evening entail of that entire night. But to these two Steel students, I'd like to first recognize Aya, she's a senior girls golfer. She's an all-conference athlete for our girls golf program. She had a tremendous round at the OHSA Sectional at Avon Lake on October 2nd, which qualified her for the district golf tournament last week in Hudson. So, I'd like to congratulate Aya on a great season and a great career. Next is Jacob Fitzpatrick. Jacob's a senior boys golfer for us. He also finished his high school career at the district tournament last week in Brunswick. Again, tremendous round, obviously, at the sectional in Avon Lake the day before the girls. Allowed him this opportunity, and Jacob had a great senior season as well. He was an all-conference performer, first-team all-SWC, as well as a Southwestern Conference MVP. So, pretty cool, pretty cool deal for Jacob, and again, a tremendous career. Congratulations to these two athletes, and wish them the best of luck, and early graduation congratulations too. So, thank you very much for coming tonight.
As a member of that 1969 championship team, want to thank Casey and Dave Zabard, a bunch of people who were instrumental in making that all happen for us. So, we've got 72 people back here. Like even our 80-year-old head coach, who had two strokes, he made it back and he walked, he would not take a wheelchair, that's how stubborn he is. It was an incredible team, the likes of which Amherst has never seen, so if ever you want to learn about it, it's something. But anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
What do either of the golfers like to say anything?
I just want to thank my family for all the support. I mean, I couldn't do it without them. I mean, that's pretty much everything there.
I want to say the same. I mean, without my family and my team, I probably wouldn't have gotten out as far as I am. Especially like making it so special for senior year, so I'm very thankful.
Teresa wants to know where you're going to school.
Undecided.
Uh, BGSU. Maybe, maybe to Ludo.
I was talking to Jacob, was it last week?
Yeah, last week, yeah.
I'm jealous, the guy can kill a ball.
Somebody's a better golfer than you.
Oh.
He's got that on the record.
He's got that rotation I don't have.
Okay.
Congratulations, and thank you for taking the time to be here.
Thank you.
We will move on to the second good news report. Joe Miller, I believe.
On behalf of the offices, State Representative District 56, myself, the Speaker of the House, we have two commendations. Back in 1939, when Ron Yakubozie first became a board number.
Joe.
I had to add, I and Therese Gillis, we have 40 years.
Forty-one.
Well, forty, you finished the 40, I kind of slimmed you together. And I didn't want to leave you all out there hanging, and then 10 years for Therese Gillis. I can have you guys come on up here, we'll get a, I think I want to hand you personally a commendation from Speaker of the House Larry Householder and myself on your deserving of 30 more, Ms. Gillis. 30 more you have to catch up, so. Here, yes, so here is, on behalf of the Ohio House, on behalf of the Ohio House for 10 years.
Thank you.
This is very near and dear to me for a couple of reasons. One, of course, being a grad of Marionell Steel, and I won't say what year.
1940.
And also, exactly, 1940 year I became a board member. Actually, I was 10, I think, when he was a board member, so. However, however, I will say that Ron and I have known each other for a long time. I coached his boy when he was 10, nine or 10, in baseball. I was just coming out of college, and I enjoyed coaching baseball, a lot of sports, but happened to have Matthew, and then, of course, I come here and we're seeing baby pictures of Matthew's kids. It's beautiful to see this cycle of life, and it's beautiful to see what you have done, what you're doing, what all of you are doing here to make Amherst just an amazing place to be educated. We have a school going to be open here soon. I'm really itching to get into that one. I'm not quite itching to get into the Powers one after hearing about all the asbestos that's in there, so. As soon as that one comes to the ground and we get this, this Powers up and running, we're going to be in good shape, so. The kids deserve it, you guys have provided it, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to be gracious and hand you these.
Thank you.
Commendations from the state.
The same as public, hearing of the public, no one has signed up to address this evening? So, we would move on to item eight, which would be the treasures report.
This evening, I have both a report and recommendations. The first item I would like to say is of a personal nature, and I just wanted to thank the board and the district and administrators and my comrades for the love and support and loss of my father. So, we'll say about that. Ohio School Boards Association, Capitol Conference is in a few weeks. You have your name tag, which is your addition to everything down there. You have your book and all of the other materials and landers you need for Capitol Conference. Please make sure you take it with you. And then, two items for some discussion this evening. I just want to inform the board that the local records commission met this evening before the board meeting. Just to refresh, the local records commission is comprised of the board president, the superintendent, and the treasurer. We discussed the differences, the variances between the current records retention schedule for Amherst and that which is suggested by the Ohio History Connection. They have been compared in detail, and it has been suggested by the local records commission that we adopt the suggested Ohio History Connection, RC-2, which is the records retention schedule, with some additional items that we have always had on our schedule. For the purposes of being concise for the board this evening, where Amherst identified a period of 10 records, 10 years retention for a particular record, what was required or suggested, rather, by Ohio History Connection was eight years. So, we don't need to retain it for those two years additional, we can adopt the eight years as is suggested. There were some other things that needed to be deleted and others added to bring our records retention schedule in line with that which is suggested. So, this is the first arduous step in preparing the district for a more electronic environment. Once the RC-2 or the new records retention schedule is approved by the board, then we will submit it to the Ohio History Connection for approval, which may take two, three, four weeks. And then, we will begin the next part of the process, which is a records inventory and a disposal request to the Ohio History Connection. And then, what we will do is we will educate the departments and the schools on the categories of records for which they are responsible, and then educate them on the periodic disposal of those records. So, that's the first thing. And then, the next thing that I wanted to share with the board is the forecast report. I want to pass that on, Mike. You've seen it before, in the sections that are green, the cells that are shaded green, those are favorable variances over fiscal year 19 or last year. So, just to share a little bit, so far this year, we are running ahead in real estate collections by nearly $205,000 and 115 intangible personal property, which is line two. For expenditures, we are running $24,000 favorable variance over last year for employee benefits, $22,000 favorable variance over supplies and materials for last year, and an $8,000 favorable variance for miscellaneous expenditures. And then, the last item I want to show you is the cash balance under fiscal '20, $23,387,605 is the cash balance in the general fund, and we have added $720,000 since this period last year in the general fund. And then, the items that I have for your approval this evening, 9/23 special board meeting minutes. Item B are the treasures financial reports for the month of September. I just shared with you some of the report from September. Item C are then-and-now invoices. Just to refresh, those are invoices that are dated prior to the purchase order. There are a number of reasons for this. I could go on to tell you that the three, for US Bank, those are debt service. We get those invoices two months before the due date of the debt service payment. We typically have those prepared on July 1st, but that didn't happen this time. City of Amherst is a permit for the demolition of the Powers Elementary Building behind us. That was initiated by our construction manager prior to having a purchase order in place. It's just kind of the way it happens sometimes, but anything over $3,000 needs to be board approved. That's what our latitude for approval stops. Item D are increases to appropriations in the 412 certificate. The 2000, or sorry, the 209158 fund is the vocational training fund. They would like an increase of $250 for expenditures in that fund. And then, the esports fund, a new fund, 300-9001, increased that appropriation from 0 to 11,500. Now, typically, the board understands that student activity accounts are either 200 accounts or 300 accounts. 200 accounts are student-managed accounts. 300 accounts are district-managed student activity accounts. So, the parameters of the esports activities would be more district-managed than student-managed, so we made that a 300 fund. And then, item E is a fund-to-fund transfer from the 022 OHSAA tournament fund to the 300 athletics fund. That is the amount that was remaining in the O22 fund after last year's tournaments. We need approval to transfer that. And then, the records retention schedule, the RC-2, which you find in Evernote, is attached, and that is what has just been suggested by the local records commission. And item G then is the approval of the donation listed below. Any questions?
Hearing no questions, we take a motion for Treasures Recommendation 9A through G. Motion to the second, is there now discussions or anything that we would like to talk about from that perspective? None? Great, call the roll.
Mr. Yakubozie.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Engel. And actually, before I begin my report, Amy, would you want to mention the premium holiday that we actually just found out about from our insurance consortium, I don't know, maybe two, what, two or three weeks ago? And I'd mention it because obviously, it's a benefit to our staff, but even more so, it's a huge benefit to the district budget, so I don't know, Amy, do you just want to mention that quickly?
We belong to the Lake Erie Regional Council of Governments for our insurance, our health insurance and our dental. And we have been running good enough on premiums as a consortium. Eleven districts, perhaps, the eleven districts have been running quite good history, experience this year with, with claims. So, the commission, the council of governments, rather, decided to enact a premium holiday for December. So, we won't be paying premiums as both a board and deductions as employees in the month of December, which are actually premiums for January of 2020. So.
Yeah, and we mentioned it because obviously, there will not be premiums that will be paid individually for staff who are participating in the insurance plan, but from an even bigger picture, it's a huge cost savings to the district. I think if I remember, we're in excess of premium holiday, will save us in excess of $300,000 just in this one fiscal year. So, obviously, it has a very, very positive impact on the bottom line and.
That's about eight, eight and a half percent of the house insurance premium budget for the year, so that's pretty.
So, it's very significant, and the insurance consortium has been just a very, very good thing for our district in these recent years, so again.
Health, health insurance is, we all know, from a market standpoint, it increases every year, and it's not unheard of to hear of districts and employers in the private sector having renewal increases of 15%, 20%. So, it's really something that the district needs to keep their eye on, and we have a wonderful combination of districts and the council of governments, and again, we've been experiencing really positive claim history, and they've done this, not last year, but the prior, the prior policy year.
That's correct.
There was, there was a premium holiday, so it's usually only one premium holiday a year, but it's enough to alleviate some of the excess balance for the council of governments, but it's also a benefit to each of the districts involved, so win-win.
Thank you for sharing that.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Just good news, and thank you for the update on the financial picture there, Amy, very fortunate to be in the position we're in. Just a couple of items for my report, actually, three. First item I wanted to follow up on is, I know there was a question that came up last month about photography, and there were some concerns with, I want to say it was volleyball, as I recall, and went back and just checking with Mr. Wolf, and I don't think he's here anymore, but he, actually, when I followed up with him, there were, it wasn't just volleyball.
Okay, well, that's all I heard about, was the volleyball.
There were a number of, excuse me, concerns with various fall sports, I want to say cross-country, maybe golf and some other sports, and so, they're in a process of trying to get those things resolved and taken care of. Excuse me, Ron and I were just talking, my allergies are terrible today for some reason, but in a process of trying to get those resolved and taken care of, but as we went back and had some follow-up conversation, Mr. Muller and I talked with all of our building principals, and it's interesting because all of our photography contracts expired this year, for fall sports, yearbook, school pictures, all of them. So, this is going to be a real point of emphasis for us, and once we get into the early part of 2020, we're going to review and take a look at various proposals, and certainly have a recommendation, you know, for you before the school year ends, as we look to have photography contracts in place for next school year. But again, I did want to follow up and let you know that it wasn't just limited, unfortunately, to volleyball, it was a fairly, thank you very much, thank you very much, a fairly widespread issue that we had this fall, and Casey's working through that. So, again, we had a good discussion at our last principals' meeting, and are going to really do our due diligence in making sure that the customer service aspect of what the photographers provide is where it needs to be. So, again, just to follow up to that from last month, the other two things, I wasn't able to be there on Friday, the core construction meeting, but I know several here were able to be there, and it's my understanding that the project is still on track, and we are scheduled to have the building or to take possession of the new Powers Elementary November 1st. So, moving forward with that, and as a follow-up to that, last item in my report is just an announcement that our transition committee, Valerie's a part of that committee, our transition committee meets on Wednesday morning, and we have, I want to say 14 or 15 of us that are on that committee, and that's going to be our focus over these next couple of months, of making sure that we're, hopefully, have all the i's dotted and t's crossed, and everything that we need to do to transition smoothly into that new building in January. But we're going to talk about staffing, you know, we've got a lot of things that we're looking at there. We just had a conversation last week trying to get a handle on how many evening cleaners we will need to clean 119,000 square feet, so working on that. We're talking about transportation procedures with this building closing and moving to the new Powers, arrival procedures, dismissal procedures, traffic flow, moving plan, what that's going to look like here over the next couple of months, and working with the teachers, dedication ceremony, what that program is going to look like on November 17, updating safety plans. We just had a safety drill, of course, we have safety plans in place for all of our buildings, and, you know, with the third grade moving from NOR to the new building, obviously, that's going to require an update to the NOR plan, as well as developing a new safety plan for the new building. So, lots to talk about as we look at what it's going to take to transition into this new building. So, again, that committee will meet Wednesday, and by January 1st, we will be ready. So, that completes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Sayers?
Hey, Mr. Grubb, thank you for the water.
You're welcome.
You need penalty points.
All right, we would move on to Mr. Muller's report.
Yeah, so, like Steve, I have one update from the last board meeting. We had a comment last board meeting that we had some commentary from the public about the app and the website, including almost all the events in the district, including the junior sports, but we were always missing the high school sports. So, I want to let you know that after Mr. Sayers and I talked to Athletic Director Casey Wolf, and we were able to look at the file that he uploads to his athletic website, which is separate from ours, and look at what we would need uploaded for our calendar and our app as well, and fortunately, they were very similar. So, as Mr. Wolf did last night, he sent me the winter sport events last night, and this morning, in about 30 minutes, I was able to take those files, and then change them a little bit, and get them uploaded in about 30 minutes. So, if you look at the app, you can see all the sports and events for the high school all the way up through, I think, January. Like here's January 7th, there's junior varsity basketball, high school basketball, high school swimming, hockey, et cetera. So, if you have any other commentary in the future, you can let them know, oh, that's been taken care of, and it's all up to date. We'll continue to do that every time, again, the sports season or event comes out, we'll get it up there.
It's nice, it's nice to have them all there.
Now, I think everything is there, and it's nice.
And the events that Janet provides to us, they're all on there, correct?
Yes.
That's where I get the information from.
That's where I generally get the information from as well, or from the buildings themselves.
Right, but I mean, it's on the app, those.
Yes, I think the website's automatically put up there, so that's why baseball athletics on there as well.
Yeah, okay. Athletics was the question, but I thought that the other things that were going to happen, because there'll be a litany of things that will happen in the next eight weeks.
Right.
Yeah.
Second item, a little bit, I think a bigger item, as we remember, a few months ago, we, when Doug Cogdell, the new technology supervisor, came on board, we developed a six-year technology plan that we thought was able to recycle, and phenomenal job. And so, we focused again on devices for students, staff, classroom, and so, a short few months later, we're already in the middle of implementing that plan. Right now, the junior high, as of last week, all the junior high students, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, all have their devices one-to-one, they have their Chromebooks. Fifth grade is done, and fourth grade will be done by end this week. Then, we transition, move over to the high school next week, and then we can circle back to third grade, and that's all because of different ways we have to maneuver carts and devices around. So, that's in the process. And of course, K through 2 will take place in January when you arrive in the building. With that being said, though, those are just devices, right? Those are devices, they're very important, infrastructure, locations to have collaborative learning is all important, but what's more important, again, is, as so many districts focus on the device, it's not the device, it's about what happens with the device. It's about the instructions, it's about the learning for the kids. So, with that, Doug and administrative team, Amy, Steve, everyone, has developed a kind of campaign, which I will share with you right now, open the big screen. And again, the focus is not on the device, it is on what the devices will be used for, and that is for Amherst Commons to be future-ready. That's the goal of everything we do, is to make sure our students are prepared for the future. And so, this campaign, along with our tech plan, is a future-ready plan, and we have a website that is available now that we have sent out to the junior high because they perceive their devices, but we were able to meet with the junior high, train them on the device, share them about the uses of the device. Manasir, along with Doug Cogdell, the technology team, that's done extensive work in that arena, letters will send home to parents. In there was this website, which everyone's, will be shared hopefully in the next couple of the days, I believe. Mr. Robinsky, the Common Conversation will be in our hands for the next couple of days, possibly?
I think.
We actually have it, and it should go out tomorrow.
Okay, so tomorrow, the Common Conversation, Mr. Seer recorded, and Mr. Cogdell recorded, is going to be launched tomorrow. We wanted to wait till that was ready so we can launch the Common Conversation, the website, the campaign itself. If you go to the website, the home feature has just explanation about the future-ready program, with a few pictures that we have already from the junior high. You can see the students with their Chromebooks that are not only a laptop, but also a tablet. We have another page of frequently asked questions that we will continue to add information to. Notice that we have a different logo on this page. In addition to future-ready, we have stickers that are going on all the student devices that say, "We are future-ready," being an Amherst Commons student. And here are the frequently asked questions that everyone can access, we will continue to add to those. Also, there's a tab of future-ready businesses, this is just the beginning, in the beginning stages, there's a different logo. This logo has a future-ready campaign, but also has the Wi-Fi signal, which will put in local businesses downtown that let students and parents know that if they have this in their window or on their, in their store, whatever, that they are, they're willing and open to have students come and work and do their homework and work on projects in their local business. That it's a welcoming sign for them to join in the business, to do their work. So, we will continue as we start working with local businesses, start putting their business logos and their information on here to let the community know, if you want to know what some businesses downtown that are future-ready businesses for Amherst schools and students, then we'll have those logos up there, and we'll begin that very shortly. And then, there are some links and resources to parents, including some questions and conversation starters that parents can have at home. We also shared with them the slideshows that we are sharing with students, so they can see what their students saw about their specific device or the future-ready program, and of course, there's the acceptable use policy as well. So, we're very excited about launching that tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Robinsky, for sharing that about the Common Conversation.
Yes.
And, I mean, all this is credit to Doug Cogdell, which, Doug, would you mind standing up?
Sure.
I know. And the tech team did some phenomenal job, I mean, outrolling hundreds and hundreds of devices within just a matter of days, and doing it effectively was just incredible. So, Doug, is there anything you wanted to share, since you So Doug, is there anything you wanted to share since you deserve the spotlight?
Well, really, I mean, honestly, just to say thank you for approving our plan, it is, it is like the highlight of a tech guy's career is when you can actually roll some great technology into classrooms and see the faces of the kids, see them get excited about learning. And, you know, they're saying, "This is really mine, this is what I get to use." It's, it's a wonderful platform for the kids to learn on, it's just the first step and we're just so excited, it's really very nice, so thank you.
Doug, can you say one, for one minute to 60 seconds about like what else, I think about clever, what else was done to really get focus on instruction rather than so much of the device?
Right. So I mean, basically, what we're looking to do is give more instructional time back to, to the teachers. So there are many different techniques we can use, things like, we use clever badges for the, for the youngest students, so, you know, how kindergarten through maybe third grade have a hard time remembering, well, a lot of things, but, you know, their username and password. We live in this world of username and passwords. They just open it up, hold a badge in front of it, it logs them in automatically from the QR code on the badge and they start working. They're presented kind of with big friendly icons of, you know, whether it's a, you know, some sort of a curricular textbook or a game or whatever, something that reinforces things, the curriculum's all right there for them, the teacher has control of it, you know, to be able to control that environment as far as what they want the kids to see. And really, it just gets them going and working and, you know, makes the teachers not have to spend so much time walking around solving problems with technology. So that's what we're for, so. Yeah, it's just, it's, like I said, it's a platform, so there'll be so many more things that we're looking to add to this in the future, right? The first step is just, you know, it's just a device, but, you know, the future is all the different things that we can add on top of it, you know, to kind of blend the type of instruction together, the traditional instruction with, you know, the new digital stuff and it's kind of a win-win, pretty exciting.
Okay, any questions for Doug?
For you, okay? Are these Chromebooks, are they all rolled out now to wherever everyone's got one or we're just doing that now?
Yeah, we're in the, we're in the process, so junior high's done, fourth and fifth grade will be done this week, high school will be next week and then the following week we'll be back to third grade.
I keep asking, when am I getting my Chromebook?
Yeah, it's coming, it's coming.
Once they get it, they can take them home.
For the high school, right now, K through 8 is, it stays in this, so the kids pick them up in the morning, they use them all day and they take them back and plug them in and get charged for the next day at the end of the day, so.
So I told them.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, and the last item real quick is just to make sure the board is future-ready, we will be updating the board iPads, it's been quite a few years since you've got your first iPad, so we'll be updating those, we'll be updating those along with, the cover, yes, we'll be making sure that you have protection.
Abuse.
I use mine.
That's abuse.
So do I.
Don't you do.
What are you doing? Giving it to your dog?
Yeah, look. There's something wrong here.
She was lost out. I'm a hard worker.
You probably let your dog eat it.
I don't have a dog.
Yeah.
That's all I have for my report, thank you.
Any questions for Mike? No questions for Mike. JVS report, I'm sure that most of you received the newsletter in the mail, yes?
I know, I just received one yesterday.
Yesterday, today.
I didn't check my mail, too.
Well, the newsletter is out, so I would take, certainly encourage you all to take a look at it, it's a very nice newsletter. We've changed the formatting of that, but it does answer a lot of your questions about issue 14 that's on the ballot. I'm sure that some of you have seen some newspaper-related articles about issue 14, so I would hope that you would all research that and make your own opinion that it really is not an exorbitant amount of money for what you have to do when labs cost what they cost to do that. And just so you all are aware, that I did make the proposal that we tear the building down and build a new one at a board meeting. And that kind of fell in depth years because they knew that it would cost a whole million to repair the building that we have there, but it still seems that we think that we're getting too much money. You know that the fire suppression alone is about $4 million to do that, because that building does not have fire suppression. So I just want you, and I'm not going to try to persuade you one way or another, I know that you look at the facts and make that known, and if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to talk to you one-on-one about that.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
When I read that in the newspaper, when I read that in the newspaper that there's no fire suppression, how are, how are we able to, I mean, how are we even allowed to do that with that many?
Well, it's grandfathered, anything that we have repaired, so when we redid a lab, we've put it in certain sections, but the general hallway for most of that is not, it's in the lab, but it's not, because it's under old code, so as long as we don't touch anything, we don't have to fix that, we don't have to make that happen, okay?
I want the safety of that many people.
And that is one of the things that we have all talked about for years, is that, you know, with all of the things that go on and our building being so spread out, it's not necessarily, it's only two stories high, but look how much territory it covers.
How many acres, Rex, I think, sit on?
I don't remember exactly how many, it's about 12 acres, I think, from that perspective. So that's one of the things that we struggled with, as well as certain doors in the building, you know, we all have secure doors. Well, there's so many doors around that building that is not, you know, if it doesn't get pulled shut completely, there is no alarm, there is nothing to trigger that, hey, there's something going on at that building at the far south end of the building. So there's a lot of things like that. Again, I would go back to just a couple of the programs that we offer, the auto mechanics program, we are actually teaching outdated ways to repair things, because so much of it is generated by computers and other things that are not current with what we have. And some of those pieces of equipment that they need are three, $400,000 a piece, can't buy one, because you've got 20 kids in there. So I mean, it's not, it's not hard to figure out that if you're going to redo a lab, it's going to take thousands and thousands of dollars to do that. It's not likely to buy new chairs and new desks.
And see, unfortunately, that's just, I don't know how, how well you guys are getting your message out on that cost, because people are saying, you know, they're trying to compare that facility and what they teach there to what we're doing here, and there's no comparison.
Right.
Absolutely not.
We're not comparing apples to apples. So the big comparison that, that some people are trying to compare is that, you know, how many buses does a school buy? JVS doesn't buy buses, I mean, we have one or two buses from that perspective, we don't buy buses, but we buy a lot of equipment, we buy a lot of machinery, we buy a lot of things when we have to redo some lab. And if you recall, about four years ago or five years ago now maybe, when we redid the health sciences lab, that we were way over budget on that, and so we've had to get caught up on that from that perspective, because the local hospitals, with Mercy being one of them, would not take some of the students because they were not trained in what they needed trained. So we have, you know, Mercy came on board and helped to, to say, here's what they need when they come out of there, they know the basics of how to do it, but what they're doing it on isn't up-to-date. So they are going to be completely lost because you're teaching them on something, an old piece of equipment. So I just, you know, and why I bring that up is because if you don't have anything to do this coming Saturday, it's the craft fair at the JVS, so if you're, want to go out and walk around the building, there will be staff around that will be glad to take you on a tour so that you can see some of those things from that perspective as well. So just keep that in mind as you talk about it. The staff, Glenn, the board members are available to come and talk about that, it's just been a bone of contention and we're going to deal with it the best way we possibly can. And there's a lot of publicity going to come out about it here in the next couple of weeks so that everyone is better informed of what the money really needs to be spent on.
Rex, does the JVS have a capital plan, 10, 20-year capital plan?
It doesn't. It usually had a five-year plan, okay, and that's where we run into problems with getting some of these things done, because we started to do some labs and then we had to revert to do the roof that was leaking in certain spaces, so we've had to patch along the way some of those things, but we haven't completely redone like the roof and some of the parking lots and some of those things, we've just put Band-Aids on those, and if we keep putting Band-Aids on it, that's only going to take more money in the long run to fix that, so.
Yeah, I did want to share too, that Glenn, actually at our county superintendent's meeting, did a very nice job, provided a nice overview of the needs, the costs associated just what you're sharing, you know, with redoing labs, that type of thing, but he did that presentation for all the other superintendents in the county did a very nice job, so wanted to, wanted to pass that along as well.
And the other thing that is, if you read the mission that the board came up with a couple of years ago, that they want to be the premier career center, vocational center in the state by 2023, 2024, from that perspective, it will never happen, it will never happen without making some adjustments, because that's why last year, we went on a tour of Penta, which is in Toledo, who built a new school. And when you look at that school compared to what we're doing, it's difference of night and day. And that's why I said, well, maybe we should build a new building, because they know the price tag of what it was to build that building from that perspective. And, you know, it's just, and there were several people that said, yes, why don't we look at that? Why don't we look at that? Because from a land perspective, we have enough land to do that, because that building went up, it didn't go, you know, spread out on the land. So it's the answer, okay? So I just ask that you please do your due diligence and look at and if you're going to support it, any positive talking that you can do about it is, Amherst board members would be greatly appreciated, okay? Any questions about the JVS? Okay.
Any cookie sales, Rex?
We've got to get through the craft show before we get to cookies and wings, Ed. Oh, there's turkey sales, there's pie.
Nice.
Pie and rolls. Yeah, you can order those.
Thank you.
Rex, I'm just sitting here, I'm just stewing about that. Like any, whoever, any bond issue, there's always people in the communities that are misinformed, uninformed, call it whatever you want, and I've talked to a number of people and listened to a number of people and I'm just amazed at how many of them seem to be misinformed, some in high places, that are saying things that are just not true. And I hope your campaign as it comes out is going to hopefully put some of that stuff to rest.
Well, I think that, I think we've been thrown a couple of curves that we weren't quite expecting from that perspective, so I don't know exactly how we're going to, that's being talked about, I don't know how it's going to be handled from that perspective, but I know it's been being talked about, okay? Which is fine, I mean, we were expecting some curves, but I think that we got a one or two that we weren't expecting.
Well, we're all tied to our own opinion, but at least make an informed opinion.
Right, that's correct. So I, you know, I know that we will do our best to make that a known thing. All right, personnel recommendations, there's no other reports I don't believe that we need to talk about, correct? I haven't forgotten any. Personnel recommendations?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Engel. Number of items here, fairly self-explanatory, I did want to highlight three or four items if I, if I could, which are a little bit, you know, maybe new or different. Item K is a recommendation to approve in memory and understanding with our bargaining unit, OPEC. What this is, is there was actually a section of language that was inadvertently deleted from the contract during negotiations, which neither party wanted to have that section deleted, so this is just essentially to reinstate that, so again, it's a little bit out of the ordinary there, so I wanted to highlight that. Also, item L, through our negotiations process with the Amherst Teacher Association, we created three or four new supplemental positions and you see here before you, in the various attachments, the job descriptions for those supplementals that were developed through the negotiations process. And in the other items, items P and Q, as you're aware, we have agreements with our two unions and items P and Q provide the same salary increases, the same changes in fringe benefits for our non-union staff, is what we negotiated with our two unions, so wanted to clarify that. And with that, would I like to recommend approval of items 12A through 12Q.
Have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
I have a question.
Is there comments or questions?
So under L, those new positions that we have, do we have, we don't have staff yet for those?
No, no. These, this would be the first step and then those positions would be posted.
Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Yakabozie?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Educational recommendations?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Engel. Would like to, with the board's permission, would like to handle A and B separately and do those individually and we can do items C, D, and E as a group. Items A and B have to do with official board recognition of our district support groups. These would be our booster groups, our PTO groups, band boosters, choir boosters, theater boosters, athletic boosters, those kinds of things. So would like to recommend approval of item 13A.
We have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion or comments on item 13A? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Yakabozie?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
At this time, would like to recommend approval of item number 13B.
Second. A motion in a second on 13B, any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Epstein.
Mr. Yakabozie?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
And then items C, D, and E, just to highlight, item D, this is a new item, this is to provide internet access for our esports room here, actually it's just down the hallway, just down from Mr. Robinsky's area there with Steel News Live, as you head down that hallway, I think it's on the left, as I recall, but that'll be our esports room, so certainly an exciting program that we're looking forward to seeing how that unfolds. And then item E, this is an item you may have recognized from past years, we need these items when we're hosting a tournament for the Ohio High School Athletic Association, so we're going to be hosting, I believe, a home of boys and girls soccer tournament games, so these are just the site agreements that we need to have with the OHSA. With that, would like to recommend approval of items 13C through 13E.
A motion?
So moved.
Motion in a second, is there discussion or comments on C, D, or E?
That esports room located by your room for some reason, you're going to be in there playing the game?
Yeah, that's why, yeah, I requested that very close. I wanted it in the studio, but we couldn't figure out the way, yeah.
I would make a comment that, you know, I was part of the conversion of the junior high football field to the soccer stadium concept, and I'm pretty excited that we are now getting to host, you know, the OHSA tournaments there, that we have a facility that we can be crowded, but other schools.
Well, it's interesting, and I'm glad you mentioned that because Casey and I was at a game, I don't know, maybe a week or two ago, and it was just a beautiful night and Casey was telling me how many comments he has received over the course of, not just this season, but previous seasons as well, about just the condition of the field, the facility, and it just seems like yesterday, but I think it's been, what, six years maybe? Six years since we installed the lights there and essentially turned that into our soccer, our soccer complex, so it's been a very, very nice improvement. It was neat to see that come together. I mean, Chuck played a major role in that. Yes, Chuck, yeah, great point. Chuck, was it the lights he was involved in?
Yeah, all the lights for minimal cost.
Back, back breaking work, show.
Yeah, right. Yes, great point, thank you.
We have a motion in a second.
We do have a motion in a second, I'm just thinking, or you want to say anything else?
Nope. Nope.
Anybody else have comments?
Just taking half for you, Rex.
I know, I know. Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Yakabozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
I thought you had something else. 13, business recommendations.
Yes, just a couple of items here, I wanted to highlight B, actually, this was just, I believe, finalized on Friday, and it's, we're, I guess, looking to the next step of the, of the facility plan as we prepare to open the new Powers building, this is a recommendation that incorporates the abatement and demolition of the current Powers building, and, you know, that process will start here late January, I think, early February of 2020. I did also want to mention, while I'm thinking of it, is that we will have one more opportunity, a community walkthrough, open house, if you will, with the current Powers building, which will be Sunday, December the first, I believe it is, at 2:00 in the afternoon, so, again, another opportunity for those that were not able to attend the first one. But item B is, you know, is a recommendation to approve that contract for the demo, abatement and demo of that Powers Elementary. Would like to recommend approval of items 14A and 14B.
So moved.
A motion and a second, is there comments or discussion? I would just ask the question of, what are we doing with the stuff that we're not moving? I mean, are we just destroying it, or are we selling it like we did in the other building?
We're going to try to, we're going to attempt to sell some things, I were possibly working on some donations to another needy school, there's been some interest on a couple items for preschool uptown, so we're going to try to, we're going to attempt to sell as much as we can, then the rest of it will be scrapped.
Okay, great. So that's going to be a fast process if we're going to start demolition in January?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be fast, we'll start advertising as soon as the students go home on Christmas break, we'll, that, we already have the items that we know that we want to put in for auction, those will already be photographed, and the guy will be ready to pull the trigger as soon as the, the kids go home for Christmas break, we'll start advertising. Do we have approximately a month and a half before we have to turn the building over? We turned it over February 2nd.
Okay. And the, and the first step, Chuck, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the abatement process?
Right.
And the actual, the physical demolition probably wouldn't occur until maybe May or June?
In the March, April.
Okay, so sometime, the actual demolition, you know, we're looking at sometime.
Unfortunately, there's so many schools being built and demoed in the state right now, that it's flooded the market, you can't even give away student desks, there's just so many, Aliree's got five buildings that they're getting rid of, most of all their stuff, so, and we found, at least I, I experienced, we didn't make a whole lot of money, we worked really hard to sell a lot of that stuff, and it went on pennies for a dollar, so that's why we felt that, we'll try to get as many of the basic stuff that we can, we're possibly going to have concession stand and things going in to the stadium, so we're going to pull some kitchen items out of the kitchen and put those in storage, so we don't have to buy standstill tables and things that we may need in our concession areas, so we're going to try to have a little bit of forethought, you know, ahead, but we'll, I'll do my due diligence, just sell as many things as we can to make some money and have to just demo that up.
Yes. What's your prognosis for all those trees over there by Powers?
We, we want to save them.
Okay.
We felt that that's going to be a really nice, green, green area, yeah, we've already instructed the demolition team, everything from the front of Powers this way, trees are going to be demoed, they have to, the trees that are inside the courtyard, they're very small, and they're, they weren't native, they were planted there, you know, but all the large trees, we want to keep, just for now, and if we're going to, what if we're going to do later, then we can look at it later, but they're going to work around them.
We're going to get a chance to get a whack at that building with that excavator.
You're the first guy on the list.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on 14A and B? If not, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. I don't believe there's anything else we have to discuss this evening, so we would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?